...to promote a dialogue about the importance of open government and freedom of information. There are many participants, including news media, civic groups, libraries, nonprofits, schools, and others who are interested in the public's right to know. At the state level, which we couldn't have enough sunshine at the state level right now, we have the Kansas Sunshine Coalition, which is a group of journalists, educators, and interested citizens dedicated to the principle that open government is essential to a democratic society. At the website for the Kansas Sunshine Coalition, they do have a lot of links for the public, especially about open meetings and open records. So I'm very encouraged that we have that at the state level. So imagine my surprise. After all the discussion the past few weeks about transparency and everything related to some of the more critical issues that have been discussed here, I was catching up on my emails Friday evening, and I got one from our national president reminding all the local Leagues that this week is National Sunshine Week and encouraging us to celebrate it and if we could do a proclamation to commemorate it, to do that too. So the timing was, I just thought, kind of serendipitous, full of synchronicity. I don't know, what are the odds? But because of all the discussion we've had lately, and it being National Sunshine Week, I wanted to take this opportunity to address a few of the issues that League cares about at the local level. First of all, I have some thank yous, and I'm not sure who the exact person is, so I will direct this to staff. The website administrator for the city's website has just done an amazing job. I can't even imagine what it used to be like before we had a city website, and I see it improving all the time. And we really appreciate that, and I think it's a great service to the community. So whoever the website administrator is, please send kudos from the League. I would like to thank Scott McCullough for revising the way that the Planning Commission agenda packets are now being posted. He's been able to work with several citizens to improve the way that the packets are set up so that the downloads go a lot more smoothly, so we appreciate that. And whoever the staff person or persons are who are responsible for posting and updating the City Commission agenda in a timely fashion, we couldn't ask for better response to get everything updated, so we really appreciate all that, especially when we've had so much information coming in and droves lately. It's been great. However, I do want to point out that we have to remember that not everybody has Internet access, and some still do depend on the newspaper to report on the activities at City Hall, so we do appreciate the journal world trying to keep us updated as well. The one thing, the great thing that's happened this year is that we now have new AV equipment, and we can have streaming video live on our computers, those of us who have them. And not everybody has the city TV channel, so that's been a great improvement too for those of us who have Internet access, so we appreciate that. So in closing, one of the things we were encouraged to do is to try to set a goal to work with the city on for next year. I would like to see if we can figure out a way to find the staff needed to be able to also stream live video of the Planning Commission meetings. That would be great, because we don't get those, I don't think we get those on TV. So if we could maybe move towards that direction, because those are also critical issues, that it would be great to be able to do that. So thank you very much for all the work that you and staff put in to keeping Lawrence City Government as transparent as possible.
Okay, I'll be happy to read the proclamation at this time for you. Whereas James Madison, the father of our federal constitution, wrote that consent of the governed requires that the people be able to arm themselves with the power which knowledge gives, and whereas every citizen in our participatory democracy has an inherent right to access to government meetings and public records, and whereas an open and accessible government is vital to establishing and maintaining the people's trust and confidence in their government and in the government's ability to effectively serve its citizens, and whereas the protection of every person's rights of access to public records and government meetings is a high priority of the Lawrence City Commission, and whereas the Lawrence City Commission is committed to openness and transparency in all aspects of its operation and seeks to set a standard in this regard. Now therefore, I, Robert J. Shum, Mayor of the City of Lawrence, Kansas, to hereby proclaim March 10th through 16th, 2013, as Sunshine Week in the City of Lawrence, and commit throughout the year to work diligently to enhance the public's access to government records and information, to increase information provided electronically and online, and to ensure that all meetings of deliberative bodies under its jurisdiction and their committees are fully noticed and open to the public. Be happy to do that for you. Thank you. Okay, we're going to start with our regular business meeting. Couple rules. If you have a cellphone, please access it, make sure it's on silence so we don't interrupt one another. Secondly is, if you're going to speak tonight on any issue, come to the podium, sign in, state your name. You've got four minutes. At three minutes and 30 seconds, you'll hear this sweet sounding chime that sounds like this, and that is your cue to wrap it up, and please take a seat and let the next speaker speak. If you have any questions, address only the Commission, no other members of the audience, no other members of staff. You direct all your comments and questions at us, we'll answer those back. With that in mind, I hope that you'll cooperate with us, and this is our business meeting, and that's the way we're going to conduct it. So we're going to start with the consent agenda, and all matters listed below on the consent agenda are considered under one motion and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion on those items. If discussion is desired, then that item will be removed from the consent agenda, and we'll discuss it separately and go down it separately. Any member of the Commission wish to remove any item from the consent agenda?
Yes, sir.
Okay? Any member of the public wish to remember, remove any item from the consent agenda? Okay? In addition to the consent agenda, I'm going to add to that, paying the payroll of $1,876,103.56 as well as paying claims to vendors in the number of 224 claims for $2,467,808.98. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Some...
Amix Cromwell. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries five zero. City manager's report.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the Commission. I've got actually a couple of items. First one, we have here in writing, which is the February building permit report from our Building Safety Division, reasonably healthy investment in community, 10 new single-family dwellings. So that's continued good news. And then finally, I wanted to advise you that we plan on having on your March 26th agenda, setting a bid date for the recreation center. It's our plan to have a public open house on March 26th from 4:00 to 6:00 o'clock. At that time, we'll present the plans in the detail that we have then. We'll be posting this on the website tomorrow. This is for the breakout of the facility, and then we also have elevations of the facility that the architects have been working on, daylight, evening. This is the interior, with pretty spacious, open entry area, large ceiling there, and then additional elevations here show the turf area, the soccer area, courts, mezzanine. This is a ground view of the courts. This is the four-lane track, and then the two courts on the side. So the staff has been meeting with architects, Parks and Rec staff, pretty consistently, almost on a daily basis, to move the project forward, so wanted to give you that update, and we'll have those available for public viewing on the website, and additional information in on March 26th, when we'll be recommending that you set a bid date. Be happy to respond to any questions that you might have.
Questions? All right. Anything else, Dave?
Yes, sir.
Good. Good? Okay, first item on the regular agenda is to conduct a public hearing to consider the vacation right-of-way of Red Bud Lane, south of 26th Street, in South Ridge Edition Number Three, as requested by the property owner, Blue Jay Apartments. Staff?
Mayor, if I could?
Yes?
Just to make everybody aware, I do own the property that is directly to the south of this project, on the east side of what would be Red Bud, extended from the south and the part that's missing there in the middle. But, and then I do represent my mother, who's property owner of the property on the east side there also. I think it'd probably be wise, since there was a vacation right-of-way in there, that I'd probably step away on this and have the opportunity to question.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, staff?
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Dave Cronin, City Engineer. This request for vacation or right-of-way on Red Bud Lane, just south of 26th Street, was made by Blue Jay Apartments, who owns property adjacent to the vacation on both sides of 26th Street, on the south side, just east and west of Red Bud Lane. They requested the vacation. The street's been dedicated since 1964. No street's been constructed, no through-street, it's not likely to be constructed in the future. The driveways for both of the properties currently exist within the right-of-way of the street. We notified adjacent property owners, we've received no objections, and we've also notified utilities, and we're maintaining existing easements for utilities. And the action request denied us to hold a public hearing and pending any discussion to approve the order of vacation. Stand for any questions.
Questions? Okay, thank you. Anything else from staff? Entertain a motion to open the public meeting, public hearing meeting?
To move.
Carter Cromwell. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Open four oh. Any public comment on this item?
This is a different deal. My, Amix, I live at 2312 Free State Lane. My question is, is that I own this property that is right here, my mother owns the property that is right here. As part of the project to the west, the restaurant request before we did vacate the right-of-way of Red Bud before, that is since, the question that I would have for the Commission is, is that vacation still in existence? And if not, my concern would be, is the access to the north lot here, where is that going to come from? So if I could get you to question or answer that, that'd be good.
I said you could ask us questions, I don't know if we'd have an answer for you. Okay, thank you. Why don't we go ahead and go through all, any other public comments, and we'll try and wrap everything up at once. Any other public comments with regards to this public hearing? All right. Entertain a motion to close the public hearing?
Moved.
Say.
Carter Cromwell. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Carries four zero. Public portion of this is closed. Okay, staff, you want to tell us about the access there that Mrs. Amix would be concerned about?
Mayor and Commissioner, Scott McCullough with the Planning Office. Sandy Day was the planner in our office that processed this commercial rezoning and platting opportunity here, and Mr. Cronin and Ms. Day are here, so they can correct me if I go astray, but Sandy and I reviewed this before this meeting, and essentially, this development has an approved preliminary plat that reflects vacating 10 feet of the existing 60 feet along the frontage of Red Bud Lane, leaving 50 feet of right-of-way with clear intention to access as far as this point here. So that was, one of the issues as that plat was going through, was to ensure that access was maintained, because this, as I recall, is a developable lot and will need access in the future to Red Bud Lane. So that's what I understand the situation to be, there's not, the final plat has not come forward, that project has stalled, and so the preliminary plat has not expired yet, but that is the intention, as I understand, today. 50 feet is an acceptable width of that, of that local road there, so we can maintain a street and access there. Is that correct?
Yeah. Okay. So is that, is the 50 feet then, is that a private drive, or is that still public right-of-way?
That would be public right-of-way.
And that's sufficient for a city standard, standard city street?
For this type of street, yes.
Okay. But your adjacent property owners, they'd have to pay to put it in?
Yes, there would be development costs associated with extending the street from this location to the north.
Okay.
At the time that we were processing this, we wanted the opportunity to go ahead and complete this connection. There's no objection from our standpoint by vacating this portion, but maintaining then this amount of Red Bud to access both the property to the west and to the east, which is necessary here.
So would that be a cul-de-sac then?
It is likely going to be a cul-de-sac, terminus in some city code standard for, for the public.
You get a cul-de-sac in 50 feet?
You might have to have some additional dedication from the property in order to do that, but, I mean, quite frankly, Commissioners, I mean, this area probably is an opportunity for redevelopment. We see that on the former, I call it the old Mazzio Pizza location, and then it's the chiropractor and the restaurant there that was along Iowa. That, that was the proposal for the redevelopment a while back that stalled. There might be other redevelopment opportunities in there as well.
Okay. Other questions?
No questions.
All right. Commission discussion? And/or a motion?
I've moved to approve.
Second.
Moved by Dever, seconded by Carter, to approve the vacation. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed, carries four zero. Show, Amix abstaining. Okay.
Didn't even start the shot.
Didn't even turn it off.
I just, I just flipped off my agenda here. Sorry, folks, the wonderful world, world of computers is going to be in there for a minute. Okay, next item on the agenda is to consider the following items related to water and wastewater master plan. And there's a, there's items A through M, and there's several ordinances, and there's several agreements, so I'm just going to let staff make their presentation, and then we can get into the specifics of the ordinances. So, staff.
Mayor and Commissioners, going to do a brief overview of this item, joined by a number of utility department staff members as, as well, and we'll try and recap some of our discussion at the study session, try and follow through on some of the issues and questions that came from that, and then take your direction this evening. You will recall that we like to look at the issue of our utility and its needs really on three prongs. Are we maintaining what we have? Are we providing sufficient capacity for the community to grow? And are we responding to the appropriately stringent regulatory requirements for operating a drinking water and wastewater utility? We've also added the product quality needs that we think are appropriate, as well as we have responded to the issue of taste and odor in regards to our, our drinking water. Got a very extensive agenda that I'm not going to go through in as much depth as we did at the, at the study session. We did try and remind you that we do think that we have good news in regards to the operation of, of our utility. We don't want to forget the fact that we've made previous investments. Commissioners at your dais have made previous investments in our water and wastewater utility, and we stand on their shoulders in regards to our ability to deal with the drought situation that we're still in and that we experienced last summer, and our ability to respond to that in regards to, to water treatment. The fact that we've been able to reduce the sanitary sewer overflows that we really had as a chronic problem in, in the 1990s and, and the work that we've done. And we've also dealt with a challenging financial environment in regards to our staffing and some of our, our costs. We recently, I think just yesterday, we posted all of our 2012 expenses online. I think it's very appropriate for you to take a look at that. We've got a narrative that describes all of those expenses to, down to $25,000. They start at the highest and then go to the lowest. I mention that because we've got a lot of cost drivers in the city organization. One of the cost drivers that sometimes it's easy to overlook is the fact that our pension costs are growing fairly tremendously. Almost a million dollar increase 2011 over 12. That's true in the utility department, that's true city organization-wide. So we've got to find ways to, to be more efficient as a utility and as an organization, and we've tried to do that in, in the utility department. We've made good use of chemicals, trying to find ways to cut down on our, on our energy use, all while we've tried to do it with a little bit fewer staffing, even though we're adding water lines, adding sewer lines, community continues to grow, and then we've also added some responsibilities in, in our utility department as well. Mentioned earlier that we've focused on trying to reduce sanitary sewer service calls, you take a look at that back in the, back in the 90s, and then where we are today, and I think that's because we've made substantial investment in those, in those sewer lines, whether it's the cured-in-place, whether it's the additional lift station work, whether it's just good routine maintenance. The not-so-good news, and we talked about that primarily at our, at our study session, dealt with the fact that we've got three main reasons why we want to start the Walker Russo Wastewater Treatment Plant. One of them is, is that when we have wet weather events, we are overloaded at the wastewater treatment plant, and Dave Wagner is here and can go into greater detail, but we're, we've got a capacity issue there. We're out, we're, we are projected to be out of the dry weather capacity towards the end of this decade, and we're going to talk a little bit about that, particularly as it relates to population numbers and how we try and adjust our thinking in regards to that. Come to find out, it really doesn't matter so much about that actual population as it does about the organic load on a per capita basis, and we'll spend a little bit of time talking about that. Our infrastructure maintenance, we're not in as bad a situation as perhaps some other communities, but we have experienced an uptick in the number of water lines that have, have failed. They don't cure themselves, it's the same saw that you all heard when we talked about street maintenance, so we've got to find ways to do that. And also, we've got insufficient capacity in that 31st Street corridor. We bring almost all of our sewage, well, we do bring all of our sewage to the wastewater treatment plant out on East 8th Street. A lot of that goes through that 31st Street corridor, unless you're on the north side of 6th Street, where we bring it around from the, the north, we're bringing it all around the horn and then up through that Burrows Creek corridor, and we've got a capacity issue there. A Walker Russo Wastewater Treatment Plant responds to that. This is the map that, that shows that, that corridor area. We think we've got a good plan, and that's for you all to deliberate and decide on. We're able to meet our projected capacity through 2030, we're able to get at that wet weather issue, we are getting past that bottleneck on 31st Street, we'll catch it up on deferred maintenance, and we think we're on top of our regulatory and quality needs as well in, in that. This is a large number, but it's a significant investment in, in the community. And we'll talk a little bit about that when we get to the rate discussion. You see these numbers here as well. It's a long time replacement program to get where we think we need to be. You see the, the five-year total for the wastewater treatment plant, it is less than what we had planned to build, both in size, but also in cost, almost five, six years ago. A key element of, of this plan that is different than what we had talked about before was to get into some of those private lines and reduce that inflow and infiltration to help us with our wet weather needs, and you see that, that project there as well, and then we've got a, a long-range project to continue to work on sewer rehabilitation, been very effective with the cured-in-place pipe program, I want to, we want to continue that as well. I think I've pretty much hit on these, these items, but this is probably the question that you may continue to have, is why now? The 31st Street corridor, the wet weather conditions, the need to get started, because it will take some time to get the project design constructed and, and under operation. We do continue to see growth, whether we're showing you that in the monthly building permit reports, whether we're having those discussions with the Census Bureau as well as to what our actual numbers are, we do know that the community is continuing to grow. I also think that it's going to be a challenge for us to invite additional development in the community from a geographic standpoint, if we don't think that we've got a solution Probably going to leave this for Dave Wagner to talk about, but we did talk about it at our, at our study session, and it does set out the, our understanding of the capacity issues that we have at the wastewater treatment plant, and that we're continuing to eat into that organic treatment capacity. Talked a little bit about population. This is what we assume our population is now. Federal government has a different number in their official census, Amix can talk about that here in a second, along with, with Scott, in regards to where we are, in regards to that, that view from, from the Census Bureau. And you recall seeing this as well, where it really is, how fast are we going to grow, and what kind of capacity do we want to have? What do we want to be able to tell potential industrial customers and their ability to grow? How well we can actually pinpoint those numbers? It's another way to look at that scenario. The, the scenario that we're, we're recommending is Scenario Five, which is the taste and odor component. Scenario one was what came out of the, out of the master plan study as well, and you see that other scenarios that don't provide the, the amount of investment in the community don't allow us to grow as much. This is basically a conclusion then of where we would be and what we want to try and do in regards to, to that issue, which is to get started with the Walker Russo Wastewater We provided you with seven scenarios, I think you've, you've seen those. Scenario one was what the master plan recommended. Scenario two, basically reduces a lot of the, of the water work, keeps the wastewater work roughly the same, but it does not, is not as aggressive in regards to water line replacement. This is another one that defers some of the work as well, and doesn't get out as many issues as we would like. Scenario four, similarly, this extends the Walker Russo Wastewater Treatment Plant to a, to a later date. Also, same thing with some of the other projects, basically stretching out those, those needed projects as well. This is Scenario Five, that includes the taste and odor work. Scenario Six, similarly pushes out the wastewater treatment plant, but has a stronger emphasis on the inflow, inflow and infiltration work. And Scenario Seven basically is, we'll continue to provide a great utility, we'll continue to do the necessary relocations for water and wastewater for some of the road projects, but we're not, we're not advancing the needs in regards to, to maintenance and capacity, and to some extent, some of the regulatory requirements as well. capacity and to some extent, some of the regulatory requirements as well. These are the rate impacts that we, that we talked about. System development charges, impact fees. We've got an ordinance on that as well. We'll talk about here in a second. We didn't update this, but I do know that Topeka's had very active discussions in regards to their utility rates. I know that other communities are continuing to do that as well. We don't base our rates based on what other communities are doing. We try and, and not seek rate increases only just to provide additional capacity and investment and maintenance in our infrastructure, but, but we're not alone in regards to the need to continue to invest in, in this important utility. Try and provide a comparison with the different communities there as well. And you, you see that in regards to the, the two different usage scenarios. And then this is just another way to try and look at the different scenarios. This is what, this was the recommendation that we provided in the master plan. The ordinance that you have before you this evening includes the taste and odor component. Obviously, we can craft it based on any direction that you want. We, we took from the study session a strong interest in responding to that taste and odor item, so that's, that's where we, we wrote the ordinance. But obviously, it's for you all to deliberate and, and give us direction. And finally, this is just to conclude my brief introduction on this. This is the, the Oriet tank. This is the older one that was constructed in the 1930s. And you can see daylight and it's, it's clearly an item that we need to respond to. Your other gen items, Mayor, as you indicated, reflect ordinances that there indeed that adopt the rates just for this year. You then have the multi-year adoption of the system development charges. That's based upon our discussions with the development community, home builders and others, that they'd like to have certainty as to what those costs are going to be over time. So that's why that's, that, that's a multi-year adoption. And then you have a number of items here that you have, that you see in the, in, in the various master plans. If you don't adopt the concurrent rates, we not encourage you to adopt the, the contracts and the RFPs because we wouldn't have a funding mechanism for them. But F is the, the redundant water supply to, to North Lawrence. It's the first phase of the Nor'easter project. G is to have an exhaustive study conducted by Bernza McDonald in regards to the taste and odor and the toxin issues in our water treatment process to see if we can't pinpoint exactly what type of treatment processes can help us deal with that, that issue before we would embark on actual design work and then construction work for that. You all would obviously decide exactly what that work would be. H is to proceed with design work so that we can bid improvements to the Caw intake here in the, in the Kansas River to improve its reliability. We're, we're down to one intake structure. If it fails, we've got a challenge about how we're going to get the water out of the river. I is proceeding with the cured in place project. I think most of the commissioners are, are familiar with that. It's been a very successful way to extend the life of, of our sanitary sewer lines throughout the, the community. J is to send out an RFP for the Walker Russo wastewater treatment plant project. We have a lot of good information from the master plan and through our work back in the '06, '07, '08 period as well, but the, the scope of that project has changed significantly as far as size. Some of the conveyance facilities have changed. We see probably a more emphasis of, of a facility at 31st in Louisiana area as opposed to 31st in, in Castle. So we think it's appropriate to entertain responses from the engineering community to see how we can proceed with that, that design. We also have to conduct a specific study on the Walker Russo River and you see that there as, as well. K is to start the, the proposals on the rapid inflow and infiltration that is part of, of the master plan. L is, is a project that really needs to proceed this evening, almost no matter what you do. We have successfully bid the water line work for the O'Connell area in regards to water lines. This is a water line that is necessary because of the SLT work. It's also going to be very helpful for the, the Walker Russo wastewater treatment plant. It also benefits our wholesale customers in regards to Baldwin City and to Real Water District Four. But we will be eating into, and the memo goes into, we get, we get some money from KDOT that comes from, from them for some of the relocation in exchange for the, the wholesale customers or some city money eventually in this as, as well. And you, and you see that outlined in the memo. And then finally, M is to start the, the, some of the design work, probably more of a, maybe it's going to be a concept study, maybe it'll be actual design work, but really to figure out what our next steps are in regards to that Oriet tank, whether it's rehabilitation, whether it's replacement, whether it's relocation. So a number of different contracts in varying degrees that are dependent upon your decisions in regards to, to rates this evening. I can respond to questions. What's more likely is for me to have to turn to staff in regards to something more technical, but very much appreciate your attention to this. Obviously, I think this is very important for the community, not simply for this year, maybe not even for this decade, but for the years to come. If, if we are able to successfully execute this, and I have every confidence that we can, we're going to be putting the community in a great place in regards to our water and wastewater infrastructure. I mentioned earlier that we stand on the shoulders of previous work. The, the dual water supply locations, the, the excellent water treatment capacities that we now have at Clinton and at, and at Caw. The superior award-winning work that we have out at our East 8th wastewater treatment plant. The, the great work that we've done to, to reduce the sanitary sewer inflows that, that really plagued a lot of, of, of East Lawrence there in the 90s when we had weather events and how we've been able to respond to that. We've done a lot of work. It's required investment. I think it's somewhat analogous to the work that we've done on streets. You want to have a good plan, you want to have good resources, and then you want to hold us accountable to execute accordingly. So again, appreciate your indulgence on this and I'll be happy to respond to questions or turn it over to staff. Any other questions? Mike?
Just a couple real quick, Dave. I appreciate your report. Talked about the new reclamation facility, sewer plant and, and the need for the sewer plant. And you talked about, you know, the, the growth that we're going to have for the future, but you talked about even in the event that we don't have growth because of the wet weather events that we have now. And then you talked about the dry weather events that are going on also. This is a necessity to be able to take care of problems that exist without growth.
That is correct. That's correct. We, we have wet weather problems now. We, we don't really think about it because it hasn't rained a lot, which is, you know, it's, it's kind of foolish not to, to understand that. We've got a wet weather capacity issue right now. And we've been fortunate that we've been able to show progress with our regulators in regards to the development of the master plan and other things in order to forbear any, any enforcement issues there. We've tried to provide you with information from other communities where they've not been so fortunate, where they, EPA has mandated certain things on that. But we've got an issue right now.
Okay. And then the, the intake for the Caw plant over here in the Kansas Riverside. Are we going to be looking at changing, well, obviously we are, the location of where that intake's going to be? In sand, one of our real problems in that area?
Well, we did a fairly exhaustive study with Black and Beach and where they did bathometric surveys. It's one of my favorite terms that I've learned, which is to determine actually the contours of the river, which you can't see and understanding all of that. I think we've got a pretty good confidence level that we want the intakes roughly in that general location where we've, where we've had them. Now, we looked at other water sources, maybe even wells up the river and things like that. And we did a cost comparison about transporting that and treating it and doing all those things. It's not any great secret in the civil engineering community that well water is probably some of the best water as far as your costs for treatment as opposed to surface water. But we've made the decision, we want to stick with surface water and we obviously want it near our existing water treatment plant. So we think that the intakes are going to be roughly in the, in the same location, but they won't, you're going to have to do substantial, substantial work in that regard. Philip or others can, can speak to that more technically if, if you need me to refer to.
Well, just over my time of being here, I always thought that I was under the impression that sand was kind of our enemy at that location and, and being able to pull it through those pumps. And, and the, and the price of that pump is, is nothing too, it's quite expensive.
Philip, you want to, yeah, why don't you come up?
Good evening, Mayor. Commissioners, Philip Sheselski, Assistant Director, Utility Department. With regard to the location of a proposed new surface water intake, as City Manager Corliss alluded to, we did a bathometric survey, which gave us a, a good idea, real good idea of what the actual riverbed looks like today. As part of that project with Black and Beach, we had a subconsultant do modeling of that reach of the river under different flow conditions and looked at how sand and other river particulate was transported during those flow events. And actually, it turns out that the, the existing intake that we're working off of today, which is the one in the farthest west, is probably in the least suitable location with the velocities of water through that area and the tendency for sediment and sands to deposit in that area. We're actually looking at going back out towards the center of the river where the first, the first to the second intake was constructed. There's a much higher velocity profile through there. The chances of deposition of sediment in that area and sands are much lower. So in the same general area, but based on the modeling and the, the other analysis we did, we think it's a much more viable, long-term solution.
Yeah. Thank you. And then, I hope, one more. Dave, you and I talked yesterday and even before the meeting tonight as we looked at the, you know, the taste and the odor problem with the water. And, and, you know, it is a, a great deal of money as, as we're looking at this, you know, the recommended, or not recommended, about the estimate of what the cost might be in repairing or whatever process is going to be taken on to take care of this problem. It, it, it seems like, you know, the cost per gallon, you know, to be able to, you know, take care of the problem i- is quite high. But as, as part of the study that's going to happen on this, it's going to be extensive. It's going to look at all kinds of things, just not one particular type of cleanup of this. Again, treatment of, you know, this water.
Commissioner Amick, that's my understanding and Dave can elaborate.
Yeah. Commissioner Amick, Dave Wagner, Utilities Director. That, that's the intent of this study is, is to look at multiple options on how to address that at, at both treatment plants. And through that study, be able to, in maybe six months to eight months, to be able to give you some details on what those options are and more information on what the actual costs are. In the master plan, I think the allocation of about $19 million for those projects makes some very generalized assumptions, not on real study. And that's the, the task that we have at hand with, with this item on the agenda is to determine that. We think that's on the outside of what the cost would be. So hopefully that's a maximum. And at, at worst, maybe we can learn to do better with what we have currently. I think that's one of the potentials that might come out of that study. I think the other potential is, is there might be some alternate techniques and treatment processes that achieve our goal and do a, a more reliable job than we're currently doing today with getting rid of and, and treating that taste and odor item. So I think it's going to provide you the information that, that the commission's going to need and the community's going to need to make a good decision on that and what the real costs are, not just a master planning level estimation. Excuse me.
Well, with the information that we have and the staff report from the US Geological Survey people and all, I assume that there are other communities that have obviously been hit with the same kind of problems and we're not going to be the first out there, right?
Exactly. There's, there's people that have already gone, gone to those advanced depths and some people have chosen not to. So, you know, and every case is specific. Every plant and every surface water source has its own signature that you need to consider when you're, when you're evaluating those costs and the tech, and the technology to apply to that. So that's what this study will reform for us.
You can't just put one of those Brita things on our water pump or water plant.
It, it works at the house to some degree, but it's not foolproof either.
A 10-story high brick.
Yeah.
Run the water through it.
Thank you.
We've got a quick, two-part question here. So the page 23, I know the pages aren't marked with numbers, but on the computer, it's page 23, 43.
What, what are you on?
Of the presentation, the study session material, presentation. Page 23 there. The recommendation, wastewater capacity recommendations, the three bullet points, construct the six MGD treatment capacity, begin to, the program for, to reduce rapid inflow and infiltration and construct 2,700 pounds of organic treatment capacity. Those three recommendations are, in scenario five, all of these actions are addressing those recommendations plus in scenario five, we've added in the, that's page 29.
Correct.
We've added in the taste issues and odor.
All, all of the recommendations except for the scenario that doesn't allow us to do any capital improvements, all of the scenarios include responding to the need for a Walker Russo wastewater treatment capacity that follows the, the master plan finding. Hopefully people can find where Commissioner Carter is there, where it says construct an additional six MGD of wet weather treatment capacity and divert flows from the 31st Street corridor. Begin a program of rapid inflow and infiltration, which different, different scenarios treat a little bit differently. And then do the two MGD wastewater treatment plant. That's, that's contained in all of the ones that, that fully fund the wastewater side. And then the difference is, is that with the scenario, and, and it is, it's the, it's the scenario that has the highest rate impact. It also includes the, the taste and odor and also the, the microtoxin issue, which is an item that we've been able to, to deal with, but we want to be able to study as well as we, as we look at our, our water treatment options.
Okay. And then should we go with scenario five? We're approving a couple of things that basically would be done and built, but a lot of what we're approving is a plan that's going to require approvals annually.
That is correct.
For instance, the pipeline replacement, 72 million, that's going to be an annual commitment. Future commissions have to do. But the treatment plan itself is something we need an approval for now to get going.
Correct.
Fully, that'll be ready in five years. Okay. Thanks.
No questions at this time? Okay, let's. What I'd like to do, Mayor, if it's all right, is I'd like to turn to Scott and Amy to talk a little bit about the census issue. I think it, it relates to this issue about are we growing? How quick are we growing? We received communication from the US Census Bureau last week. You have a copy of that. You also have got their staff report. We've also got information from staff in regards to how we think that it impacts this issue. So I want to, I want to deal with that issue if that's, if that's all right. It's not too much of a digression, but it really, it really does relate to this if, if that's satisfactory.
Please.
Okay.
Good evening, Commissioners. Amy Miller, Long Range Planner. During 2012, staff analyzed data released from the 2010 decennial census specifically focusing on population and the housing unit counts. We compared those figures to our own estimates of housing units and corresponding population and determined that tho- that those were undercounted during the 2010 decennial census. Staff was able to analyze these because we track not only our building permits on a yearly basis and how many housing units are added to the market, how many housing units are demolished, but we also cross-referenced with utility billing data and data from the Douglas County Appraisers Office. Staff discussed options for correcting that count and learned that the Census Count Question Resolution Program, or CQR Program, for challenging the housing unit and was, was our option for correcting that count. And in November of 2012, staff submitted a challenge under one of three possible criteria. Coverage, which was explained to add or delete housing units erroneously excluded due to processing errors. Staff believes that the decennial census and its associated survey process is not accurate and believed under the challenge criteria that the Census Bureau would change our housing unit count and ultimately issue us a new population figure for the 2010 decennial census. unit count and ultimately issue us a new population figure for the 2010 decennial census. While staff believed that there were roughly 1,300 housing units that were missing, the challenge submitted was only for 500 units since that represented the census blocks with the highest unit discrepancies. On March 5th, staff received a letter from the Census Bureau detailing their determination. It acknowledges that there were errors in updated census tract and block counts, but only by moving housing units originally reported in certain blocks to other blocks where they were actually located. The Census Bureau did not change the overall housing unit or population count. Staff spoke with the CQR office and was told that the Census Bureau could not change the housing unit figures because the error was one that was not admissible under the CQR Program. Admissible errors are only those concerning geographic boundaries or post-survey errors. This is a pre-survey area, error, and therefore is not challengeable. It is worth noting that other cities have had the same challenge with the CQR Program and incorrect housing unit counts, most notably New York City. Staff believes that the best data is produced at the local level with our own records and therefore believes that our own housing unit counts and population estimates should be used when analyzing population growth. Staff had been waiting to issue post-2010 annual estimates until the CQR Program challenge was complete. Estimates produced by staff follow a Census Bureau prescribed formula that starts with a base of using the decennial census data and adding the number of housing units built multiplies by an occupancy rate and an average per person household figure. Having the 2010 decennial census housing unit count be inaccurate presents a dilemma since normally staff would switch to using figures, using those figures for all estimates released after 2010. Therefore, staff has prepared two estimates, one based on the 2010 decennial census figure and one that continues the estimates from the 2010 era and uses the 2,000 census housing unit count as the base. The January 1st, 2013 housing unit count using the 2,000 census figures as a base is 39,818 units, which results in a corresponding population for January 1st of 2013 as 94,586. Staff believes that the estimate produced using the 2,000 census figure as the base is the most accurate and should be used for planning purposes. Be happy to answer any questions you may have.
That just seems like an unbelievable number to be off, I mean, between the two. And you're looking at 6% or so, which is, I mean, for all the hype they do to try and get everybody counted on the day they're going to count it and then we're off by that much, it's pretty amazing to me. I understand.
One of the things that we, you know, as we're looking with, we've got on our plate today, talking about growth, when we're wondering about the numbers, you know, it really matters to me more almost, how do we, you know, what do we figure back in 2000? How did we, you know, would we have the same dispute? We need to be counting in the same way. If we're going to be able to understand what our growth rate is, we have to have a consistent method of counting and we can't, if we change that, then our, then our growth numbers are going to be skewed one way or the other. So is there?
Staff went back and looked, we've got all of our housing unit data in the computer since 1950, number of units built, number of units demolished, those types of things. Staff went back to 1980 and was able to corroborate the 2,000 census housing unit count using our own local data. So therefore, we assume at this point that the 2,000 census figures were more accurate.
You have one?
Sure. Just curious, so they, so on a technicality, they're not going to update this one, but we need to use what the real number is obviously for planning, something that's real, like capacity needs in sewer and wastewater. What, I'm curious though, did they commit that that, those changes will be addressed so that in 2020, we won't have, we can at least, because there's more than our planning. I mean, federal dollars and state dollars are depending on this number being right too. But I didn't see anything that said for sure that at least it's corrected for the future, even though they won't go back and do, correct the 2010 census.
They didn't address it explicitly, however, we did have a brief conversation regarding that we'll have to start planning for the future with the 2020 census. Before every census, we participate in the LUCA program, Local Update of Census Addresses. We were able to confirm that the missing housing units were on the LUCA information that we provided to the census. So really, with the 2020 census, we'll have to be a bit more diligent in what happens between the LUCA program and the surveys actually getting mailed out.
Okay, thanks.
So were they just not, were they just not mailed out?
They weren't able to confirm that to us. They were telling us that it was a pre-survey error.
Okay. That sounds like some kind of code word that I'm not familiar with. Mike, go ahead. Go ahead.
Amy or Dave, didn't we get into a similar situation like in 2005 when we used census figures to do a lot of the planning on the water and wastewater stuff that was in the northwest part of town? And those figures really weren't very right at all?
What? Commissioner, I think that's a, that's a good question. We based a lot of the work that we did in the northwest, a lot of the work that we were doing in '06, '07, '08 time period based upon a much more rapid growth rate than we were experiencing then and what we definitely experienced since then. So we had the growth rate, I think, wrong at that, at that period. And I think the, the growth rate for the earlier master plan was like 2% or pretty close, which, you know, that's, that's pretty hard to sustain. You may get some, may get some capacity issues in regards to that, but, you know, that's, we weren't, we didn't, certainly didn't experience that over the past few years, at least in our opinion.
Okay. Well, I think, I think that we are a lot better off in taking the recommendations that we have from staff and knowing where these figures are actually coming from and the information that we have provided here rather than going somewhere else and trying to find it and have it sent back here and having it come from somebody who really doesn't know us, so.
I have two questions. What's the Census American Community Survey?
The American Community Survey is a program that's undertaken every three to five years, depending on what data set they issue. It's a survey, it's based on a lot smaller sample size than the 2010 or the decennial census.
And who does that?
The Census Bureau.
Okay. And then, okay, so we're talking about 2010, which is good to get a benchmark. Let's talk about two years and three months subsequent to that. Based on your, the way you calculated your data to refute the claims of the US Census Bureau, what kind of growth have we seen over the two-year period since you went back and counted or evaluated the numbers? Do you guys have an idea of what kind of growth happened between 2010 and today?
We know what the, what the 2,000 number was, and I ran the 2013 this afternoon. It's hot off the press, I apologize, I did not calculate the growth rate on that.
So you, the numbers hot off the press from where, from our numbers?
The January 1st, 2013 number, which is up on your screen, the 94,586 is the one that's hot off the press.
Okay, so that is, that's, that's, this is the number you think represents?
The 94,586 is where we're at as of January 1st, 2013.
You're really pretty comfortable with those numbers?
Very.
Because you based that on your 2,000 census, which was corroborated back to 1980.
Correct.
You can follow all that, track it all through.
Yeah. So you went 2,000 and then you benchmarked from there forward to 2010, came up with your challenge and then added these numbers subsequent to that and you came up with the number of roughly 94 and a half thousand people.
Correct.
Okay. Using all the same techniques?
Using the prescribed census estimate formula.
Wow, that's a big difference.
Commissioner, sorry, I'd like Dave Wagner to talk just a little bit about what, what this means in regards to wastewater capacity. It is relevant, but it's, it's, it's relevance is a little bit different than you might think.
Mayor and Commissioners, something we do know, we do know how much organic load is currently being received at the wastewater treatment plant. And we presented that in the materials and it's, I'll give you the number, 14,630 pounds of organic load on a daily basis is what the plant's experiencing. Over the last, since I've been with the Utility Department 30-plus years, the number that we've dealt with, with a per capita contribution has remained relatively constant at about .158 pounds of organic load per capita. If we use the organic loading of the wastewater treatment plant and the historical contribution on a per capita basis, we would validate planning's numbers and estimates today on what the population of Lawrence is. But what that means to us from an organic and capacity perspective is with 14,630 pounds of organic capacity, we have approximately 2,000 pounds available that we can take on in addition to what we're treating today. So if we take the historical value of what a load per capita is, that gives us the value that we think we can treat for a growth of approximately 12,000 population equivalents based on what the existing loading is that we see at the plant today. Again, when we, we don't talk necessarily completely about per capita when we say population equivalents. For example, the Harmark expansion, which we, we mentioned where they're bringing in additional processes, is going to take up an additional load factor equivalent to about 500, 100 people that we're going to experience because of Hallmark's expansion. So not all of that is necessarily absolutely attributed to population growth, but as a general rule, if the demographics of Lawrence stay about the same, that distribution will occur. The bottom line is, is that whether the Census Bureau number is, is accurate or whether the planning figure numbers is accurate, we still only have that much room left at the wastewater treatment plant. And the estimations on what that can serve between now and, and the end of this decade is, we think, the number that we're focusing on. So from a wastewater planning perspective, we don't believe that the census change in population impacts our recommendation at all to you about what the timing of the Waukesha facility is. So hopefully that's not too much information and tries to clarify how we evaluate capacity at the wastewater treatment plant. But if you have questions about that, I'd, I'd be happy to try to clarify that a little bit if I can.
All right. I know this is probably a strange question, but I'll ask it anyway. So for the purpose of defining population and your calculations of the organic load, does the US Census include all of the student living and housing at the university or not?
It's my understanding that the number reflects students who claim Lawrence as their residents.
Okay.
Is that the best way to articulate it?
April 1st, May of this year.
See, it's where people are located on that day, is the way they tell you.
Well, where they claim as their residents, is their permanent residents. We obviously have commuters who come into KU.
Right. Right. Which was kind of where I was going, is, okay, so you have this institutional use with the plans of constructing additional or alternate housing, you know, on campus, so that's going to probably create or change the load over time. With more people in, in the city that are living or just, or in the community, but not necessarily living here, but using water and facilities and eating and dining and those kind of loads, is, can we really effectively plan for or estimate those kind of uses when you're talking about more institutional, somebody who might be here between 8:00 and 8:00, going to school, working? I mean, those, because those have loads on our wastewater treatment plant. So I guess I'm trying to figure out, is it really the only, you know, we're kind of a unique community in that we have this large institutional use, plus you have lavatories and other organic loads from the university and as they grow. I mean, there's a lot of moving parts here and I guess I want to make sure that you just, some, some might hear what you said, meaning that we could add 12,000 people without any problem to the current system based on their use. But my question is, is that taken into consideration, some of the institutional land uses and, and, you know, people who come here but don't necessarily live here and then also growth at the university and other kinds of uses that might put additional organic load factors on?
I would think if, if the community would change demographically that way, if we had a lot of outsiders who aren't counted come in and use our facilities.
Literally.
The wastewater plant's going to know that.
Yeah.
When, it's not going to care whether they're counted on the census or not.
Exactly.
And the, the one thing that I think helps us out is, is that we have monitored wastewater loading for 35 years and that we do see a correlation between and can correlate with, with Amy's numbers historically from 2000 to 1980 and come up with a pretty solid loading value for a counted residence on what that can be. So Lawrence, at least from what wastewater data is showing us, hasn't changed dramatically with its demographic distribution of, of people being counted or not counted. It's at least been consistent, which is good news for planning, I think.
Okay, good.
Well, the other thing, the other point you make for, if you just do the simple, simple math, you have your capacity and per capita usage each day, you get 12,000 people, but every thousand people you put into the city, they have that much more service that they're used to. There's more restaurants. I know we pay a lot of money for our wastewater treatment in the restaurant I own. You've got grocery stores. So you just can't simply say we can put on 12,000 more people before we run out. I don't know what the coefficient is of each person with what services they need, they're going to load up that system too, but certainly at each thousand people, you add more services that load, put more load on the system. So I think it'd be wrong to go away from the meeting tonight and say, well, we, we can wait, we've got 12,000 more people we can grow into and we'll be okay. And then especially with the waste, or with the rainwater problem, the infiltration.
I think that's, that's correct, Mayor, and that's why we, when we get real antsy when we say population numbers and wastewater loading and we want to clarify 12,000 population equivalents. It doesn't necessarily mean 12,000 people can move to town and we can absorb their waste load inclusive of everything they might do with jobs and commercial operations as well.
Yeah, good point. And I would just add too, that with a five-year-plus probably lead time to get it built, whether it's populated, you know, population equivalent, 12,500 isn't, if you're looking at five years lead time to make the decision today, it's still not long.
Mayor, along with that, had the same conversation in 2005, 2006, when we were trying to locate where the new plant was actually going to be built along the Waukesha River. And at that time, Dave, I think that you were telling us that we had, you know, a capacity at that time, 10,000 to 12,000, the same kind of number today, but, you know, looked like that we could actually have a little bit additional capacity, you know, that might give us an extra 10. Well, it seems like to me that we've used up that first 10. Now we're down to the critical time of that final 10,000 to 12,000 population equivalent. Is that best guess is what I'm reading here?
Yeah, I think that's accurate, Commissioner Amick. And, you know, when we, there's a, there's an accuracy to what we're telling you that, that, you know, there, there are a whole bunch of different ways to look at capacity at wastewater plants. And, you know, we've obviously presented one to you, wet weather loading, 125% of what our existing load is. If I look at, at just the boilerplate of the wastewater treatment plant, I'll give you a number that's less than 12,000. However, we think we can go beyond 100% on organic load as well and still meet all of the regulatory requirements that, that we have and do a good job of, of meeting the community needs beyond what the boilerplate, so we can run 100%. And so that's why you see, we're using into some of that reserves and some of the flexibility that we built into the plant and made some good choices for it to extend it even beyond what we, what we thought it could do. It's a very good performing wastewater plant.
And I appreciate that, but, you know, one of the things that you just mentioned there is I don't recall the real emphasis, you know, seven, eight years ago of talking about these wet weather events, you know, being, you know, such a critical part of the decision that we'll make tonight. So there have been a number of things that have changed that have even added to the problems as they exist for that addition or what that capacity actually is.
You know, Commissioner Amick, when we talked to you about master planning and, and a new initiative with what we have available now to plan with is significantly more information on, on wet weather flow, our information about what our actual infrastructure assets are and what their configurations are, is significantly more detailed information than we've ever had in the past. And so with, with the master plan was delivered a model that we think is, is right now, one of the best management practice things that you can develop. It's got good foundations, it's got good information behind it. So it's a lot more accurate than previous master plan models and decisions that we've used in the past. So we think we've identified some issues and we've quantified those, I think, a lot better than we've done, done previously because our tools are a lot better than they used to be.
And along with that, when the director was trying to convince us that the need for those flow meters and all that stuff, I thought, ah, this isn't going to work. But... But I guess I was wrong. Thanks.
Hey, we, if any other questions for staff, we need to take some public comment here too. We can.
Mayor, follow up on Commissioner Cromwell's number. He asked what the growth rate was using the 2000 basis, and it was about 0.9% per year since 2000.
What'd you say, I'm sorry?
2010.
Wait, what?
Commissioner Cromwell asked what, from 2010 forward till 2013, what was the annual growth rate? 0.9%.
And that's based on the 80,508 starting in 2000?
Exactly.
Okay. I was just doing the math, thank you.
Any other staff comments at this time?
I don't lose out there.
Okay, we'll open it up for public hearing at this moment? Okay. No public comment. All right. Back to the city commission. Well, you know, here's, I've been through it three times, two study sessions and a private tutoring session, and it just seems to me that we don't have much of a choice. We need to be doing a lot of things, and then it's a question of whether we want to do the full palette or not. And we're talking about putting on a number of enhancers in the city that are, which I think are really going to result in additional growth in the last part of this decade and for sure the next decade. We're going to connect K-10, and that's going to be an economic driver when it's linked, as well as being linked to Highway 59. We're going to see a new hotel downtown, we're going to see a new library, we're going to see a new recreation center. We're going to have a number of other activities that are going to produce a number of opportunities for us. Farmland Industries, those sites will see some daylight and hopefully we see some activity there. So for us not to do, not to take that challenge and move it forward to where we can accommodate all that would seem like it's penny wise and dollar foolish, just to say it quite frankly. But, and then there's the question of taste and odor, do we want to spend the money or not? And while on the citizen survey, it said one in five people had a question with it, and that doesn't sound like much, but if I had a restaurant where one in five people didn't like my food, I'd be horrified. So, you know, you've got to look at it that way, and these people are our customers. It's a quality of life issue, and it seems like in the past few years, we've seen that issue pop up more than we have in the previous years. I don't know if that's because we're having warmer weather, because we're having sedimentation that's filling in at the reservoir at a higher rate, if it's a combination of those things, or if just in general the quality of water has more atrazine in it. So I'm a believer that probably we're going to see that happen more often than less often. And so we ought to take the advantage we have now, as long as we're looking at redoing everything, to move forward with that as well and see if we can't conquer that question. Also, you got to figure that that could get worse than what has been. When it was real bad this summer for a short time until the staff got their hands, figured out how to balance that as best they could, and they did a great job. But, you know, that could be, that could get a lot worse, it could get more difficult to treat. You could have a more sustained period of time where you have that odor and taste problem, and I just don't think it speaks to the quality of life that we're trying to promote for the city. And, you know, we're trying to attract people to come here and live and bring their businesses here, and that's just one element that I believe is a quality point in terms of where we're going. So anyway, with that backdrop, any comments and thoughts on this? Hugh?
Well, I'd echo everything you said there. Nothing sexy about this portion of it, but there are a lot of good things happening in these core service that I would commend staff for all the work on this and sticking with it. It's, and past commissions for maybe holding off on pulling the trigger, but I feel pretty comfortable now, we really need to do it. And the staff, the plant staff here has put together here is not a Band-Aid for us to survive, but it's actually, I think, something that'll allow us to thrive and really capitalize on a lot of the good things that are starting to head our way, I think. So it's important, and I think it does, like I said, more than just put a Band-Aid on things, it really sets us up for future success and expect no less. So I'm ready to move forward with scenario five.
Question on scenario fives, taste and odor issues. We don't have a plan currently for implementation plan. We're just talking about doing a study at this point. Scenario five includes everything and includes money for a study.
Correct.
But not any money for actually doing anything.
All it has is G as in go there for the Burns and McDonnell study for 137,128. Commissioner, for the taste and odor, water treatment process evaluation provides us with the revenue to be able to do that. That report's going to come back, look at the taste and odor and the algae toxin processes, tell us with, in good definitive detail, are there things that we can do just operationally to get at the issue, or what is the best treatment capital improvement that we need? Where would it be physically located at the two water treatment plants? What would it cost to operate? What would the actual cost estimate be? Would not be the design of that actual facility, but would be enough information so that a commission can make a decision saying, yes, this is still worth the investment, still worth the necessary rate increases to do it, to actually build it. I mean, I think our estimate is 18 million, 16 to 18 million for both water treatment plants, so eight to nine million dollars per plant to do something as far as the capital we, we're not funding that this evening, we're funding enough of it to do the study.
I would assume the study would also give us indications on what the capital ongoing expenses of running this compared to what we're doing and whether we need to, or whether we have the ability to scale back our carbon at certain times of the year and how much savings we'd have for that and such. But, you know, I did want to make a clarification because some of the, you know, it sounded a little bit like scenario five was solving our taste and odor problems if we went that direction. I just wanted to make sure that there was clarity in expectations.
Today's step is necessary, it's not sufficient.
And I didn't once laugh when we were talking about Wayne Poo being 6% more accurate than the U.S. Census Bureau. Not once did I laugh.
But you brought it up.
Any other worthy comments? Mike? Mike Amick?
Mayor, thank you. I think that there are a number of great projects in here. I think one that's important, ever since the last pump went down on the water intake in the river, I think is something that we've kind of been living a little bit on the dangerous side, wondering if that were to go down, how much pressure it would put on the Clinton Plan and how long we would be sitting here without maybe making decisions on water usage, you know, into the future. That one always scared me. The Oriet tanks, I think another thing where we've been a little bit fortunate that there hadn't been a major eruption there and watching all that water come downhill. So I think that there are a number, again, a number of good things here that's going to take care of, you know, a lot of maintenance things that we have. Again, as I said earlier, you know, when we were looking at making the purchase of where the new water, the sewer plant was going to be, the wastewater plant was going to be, the thing that happened was we weren't talking about a lot of the wet weather events and the infiltration problems that we were having then, and that's something that I know, Mike, as you and I have been here, that we've seen that escalate and, you know, that's probably only going to get worse and continue to eat up capacities that we have. And then there's that agency of the EPA that we have to hear from from time to time. So, you know, I think that all of us would like to say that, you know, that we don't really want to spend, you know, all the money at this time or raise rates to be able to do these things. But sometimes you've got to make decisions that are to take care of, necessary things for today and also for the future. I mean, as the city manager said earlier, you know, even without, you know, growth that, you know, that we hope is going to happen, you know, in the future, we got a lot of events that we need to take care of right now, and these are going to help take care of a lot of those problems that we'd have even if we didn't have any growth. So I think it's smart moves. I appreciate all the help that staff's provided me and explanations that, you know, I've needed to make the decision. There's nothing easy about making decisions, it's going to raise rates. But here again, I think it's something that, as we look at, being able to sell the services and this is basic core services we're talking about, Mayor, and others, I agree with that. So anyway, we're ready to go.
Okay. Well, I just recall too, this summer, the number of broken water mains were day after day, sometimes two in a day. And of course, a large portion of this, or a portion, I shouldn't say large, the whole thing is going to be spread out, is water line replacement, and that's got to happen, otherwise we're going to spend more money and labor just trying to take care of things than the disruption to service. So this addressed the whole host of water, wastewater issues that are out there that we need to pay attention to, so. All right, let's get back to the agenda here. Excuse me for what I was on the other. We'll go through these one at a time, I think, and take separate motions and if there's anything that we have a question about. So the first item.
I think you can start with B.
B, okay. Consider adopting the 2012 Water-Wastewater Master Plan. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. Dever, Amick, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Carries five zero. Consider adopting the 2013 to 2017 Capital Improvement Plan for scenario number five. That would include the, a study of the taste, odor, and microtoxin issues.
So moved.
Amick?
Second.
Carter, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, carries five zero. Consider adopting on first reading ordinance number 8846, adopting the 2013 water and wastewater rates.
So moved.
Carter, second, Cromwell, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose, carries five zero. Consider adopting on first reading ordinance number 8847, adopting the 2013 to 2017 Water-Wastewater System Development Charges.
So moved.
Dever, Amick, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose, carries five zero. Consider authorizing the city manager to execute a supplemental agreement number one to the existing engineering services agreement with Burns and McDonnell for Project UT-0701DS. That's the CAW-WTD Water Transmission Main, redefining the project scope and reducing the contract amount by $343,996 to $787,658.
So moved.
Second. Move Cromwell, second, Carter, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose, carries five zero. Consider authorizing city manager to execute an engineering agreement with Burns and McDonnell in the amount of $137,128 for Project UT-1209, the Taste and Odor and Algae Toxin Water Treatment Process Evaluation.
So moved.
Second. Amick, Dever, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, carries five zero. Consider authorizing staff to negotiate a supplemental agreement to the existing engineering services contract with Black Beach for engineering services for project number UT-1102KA CAW-WTP Water, Raw Water Intake Replacement.
So moved.
Amick?
Second.
Cromwell, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, carries five zero. Consider setting a bid date of April 9, 2013 for a bid for UT-1212-2013, the Sanitary Sewer Cure and Place Pipe Repelletation Project.
So moved.
Carter, Cromwell, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, carries five zero. Consider authorizing staff to advertise request for proposal R-1308 for Engineering Services for Project UT-1304, the Waukesha Wastewater Treatment Plant, and request for proposals R-1309 for Engineering Services, project number UT-1306, Waukesha Conveyance Corridor Facilities.
So moved.
Second. Amick, Cromwell, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, carries five zero. Consider authorizing staff to advertise request for proposals R-1307 for Engineering Services for Project Number UT-1305, Rapid Inflow and Infiltration Reduction.
So moved.
Second. Dever, Amick, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, carries five zero. Consider awarding the construction contract for bid number B-1305 to the low bidder, Gurney, is it? Gurney Construction in the amount of $1,967,967, and consider authorizing city manager to execute the construction contract. Consider authorizing city manager execute supplemental agreement number two with Wilson and Company in the amount of $33,800 for construction phase engineering services for Project UT-1206DS, O'Connell Road Water Line.
Move.
Carter, Cromwell, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, carries five zero. And last but not least, consider adopting, consider authorizing staff to distribute request for proposals for the Oriet Tank and Pump Station Replacement Project.
So moved.
Amick?
Second.
Ooh, those are going to die for lack of a second. Yep. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, carries five zero. Well.
You just spent a lot of money.
You could add just about anything to the end here. Yeah.
That's as much as we can do for water and wastewater tonight.
Appreciate the investment.
Okay. Thanks, everyone, staff. The work you've done has been very good, it's been helpful to understand and for us to feel like we know what we're doing here, and sure it'll make a big impact on the community. Next item is public comment. Is there any public comment this evening of general nature? We don't have a very talkative public tonight. Next item on the agenda is the future agenda items.
I said engineers, being one, I can say that.
Put more engineering stuff on, will you? All right, future agenda items.
My pleasure to remind you that we do not have a meeting next Tuesday.
Char.
We will probably pay for it the following Tuesday on the 26th. We've got a number of items that you'll see there. Jonathan's been busy on a number of community events and their requirements. There's a couple of planning items on consent, then we're off to the sixth and K-10 zoning items. Already mentioned the public meeting and then setting a bid date for the Recreation Center. We're working on the Recycling Service Ordinance, got a draft of that, been through the draft contract with HAND, meeting again with them tomorrow to move that forward. Have that on the agenda on the 26th, and then want to finish up the executive session on my evaluation.
And just of note, that's our last working meeting in which we have general agenda items. The following week is the election, and the following week after that is transferring of commissioners, so anyway, we're going to wrap everything up here on the 26th. Comments or questions on that?
It's a great meeting to, I mean, we're able to finish a lot of stuff. I think that's admirable.
There's no lame ducks here. You guys are all flapping your legs.
Are there, I.
Gums.
I always cream stand when I ask those questions, are there any commission items?
Got any water?
Chloride in my drinking water.
Oh, we should have, we should have. You kind of raised that issue when we had the last agenda item.
I know, I know. I almost did.
No commission items. Calendar?
We do have rental registration stakeholder meeting tomorrow at 3:00 here, so I hope we've sent the invitation out to those individuals that are indicated they will be there. I think it's a public meeting, but it's my understanding that the mayor and vice mayor, we're going to conduct the meeting, office staff will be here as well as a resource.
We'll see if anyone shows up.
Oh, my guess is they'll be here.
No problem.
We may exchange engineers for landlords.
I won't be here, I'm sorry. I went ahead and scheduled some other things.
I'll watch over you.
Okay, yeah, take care of my part.
Just a few other items there for your attention.
We've got a couple retirements coming in.
Yes, we do. Yes, we do. I think we also, I don't know that, did the AT&amp;T invitation get out to the commissioners?
AT&amp;T?
Let's find that here, just a second. I know that Mike Scott wanted you all to know that they're having a grand opening for the new AT&amp;T facility there, 33rd and Iowa, on March 22, 11:30. I know he's gonna send a notice to you all, or, I don't know if that's a ribbon cutting or whatever, I don't believe, he sent me an invitation, saying, "Let the commissioners know they want to contact information."
The 22nd, yeah.
Yeah, that's, okay, yeah, you're doing it.
A week from Friday is that.
22nd, yeah.
Yes. Can't miss the morning banners there, so.
Yeah, calendar. The other calendar items?
I don't have...
Well, we've arrived at our favorite part of meeting. I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. Cromwell, Dever, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Carries five oh.